Hello, everybody here and there. This is a call to order. This is the January ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Open public meeting of the Needham Library Board of Trustees. Being held via hybrid format, allowing remote attendance. I'll start by saying Happy New Year to you all. I look forward to spending time with you over the next year as we do the good work for the library and do our best. I'll take a roll call, confirm that trustees, library staff, and any other persons anticipated to be on the agenda are present and can hear me to say aye when I say your name, please. Kay Cahill does not hear. We know she's traveling someplace exotic right now. Wish her well. Anna Geraldo Kerr.
Here.
Airheart Grace.
Here.
Michael O'Neil.
Here.
Robert Pettit.
Here.
Megan Small.
Here.
And me, Jay Fialka, I'm here. Library staff, acting director Dimitri Kiriakas. Is Danielle not with us tonight? Okay. Administrative specialist Jenna White. Program specialist Gayle and Dennis and reporting secretary Faith Christie.
Here.
No one here from the Library Foundation. Okay. This meeting is being recorded. If there's a problem that prevents the completion of this meeting, we will reconvene at seven o'clock PM on February twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. I just want to remind the trustees, that's a Monday. We rescheduled it in February to accommodate Katie King's schedule, but that's Monday, February twelfth. And I hereby call this meeting of the Needham Board of Library Trustees to order at seven oh four PM. Is there anyone in the public who has any comments? We allow for public comments at the beginning of our meeting? No? Okay. And then I suppose we'll start by, I'll request a motion to approve the minutes of the December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. We can discuss the after.
So moved. Second.
Second, okay. Any comments on the minutes? Any? Anybody have find a typo or anything? Airheart?
Yeah, I saw that we we recorded the fact that I was correcting Nick Tahr's
Name?
Yeah, name and, and that he was the former Olend College Dean. But then we didn't represent that in an updated direction. We need to go back and edit that Lego architect and Olend and also to Lego architect and former Olend Dean.
Good catch. Thank you. Anyone else? Good job. Thank you, Faith and Megan, for your work with the minutes. And I suppose we'll have a vote now to approve the minutes. I'll say your name. Kay's not here. Anna Geraldo Kerr.
Aye.
Airheart Grace.
Aye.
Michael O'Neil.
Aye.
Robert Pettit.
Aye.
Megan Small.
Aye.
And I, Jay Fialka, will also say aye. Very good. Thank you. I guess next on the agenda is the director's report.
Okay, some general highlights. Starred by Ikey Bateman for took over the digital media services position that Rob and Booney vacated. Got up speed pretty quickly. She's gotten us caught up. We're purchasing DVDs, CDs, overdrive, the bench, ebooks. All those materials are available. The budget, line items are back on track to be spent this year. And she's gotten our database statistics back on track as well. Great. Erin has got some big way program ideas solidified. The second Needham writing contest, writing conjunction with the high school ever in schedule. It's ready to go for January. Bring in the volunteer group, all the volunteers. Is set to launch and have a, have its first meeting on January fourth, which could have been best.
Got a registered trademark.
Is that a volunteer group for, are they? Are they just volunteering in the community or are they like volunteering at the library?
Could be in the community. I think they haven't pushed out yet what, what kind of projects, but it doesn't necessarily have to be just the, the library.
I think that they're supposed to be community leaders for the team.
Okay, so it is that, that leadership group for the life for the
Yeah, but with other opportunities as well.
Cool. Thank you.
Let's see. And library staff.
I'm sorry. These might be people that we're going to want to consult with as we go forward with this base plan for that. That charity volunteer.
So library staff across all departments were super responsive to Allison's request for recommendations. Staff picks, the staff picks display for the end of the year. Really successful. Allison was inundated with tons of responses from all of our favorite books. Because we all love talking about our favorite books. And yeah, they moved so well that we're going to, they moved so well once they got the display going. We're going to establish a staff picks display throughout the year. Allison also had a really productive chat with the friends who organized ongoing monkey book connections in the prison book program in Quincy. I think that was something should have involved it into Belmont Library. We're looking to have our first box pick up the range for the end of January, which will be, I think, right after the book sale.
Right.
Danielle's been hard at work setting up more new computers, replaced the outdated public computers. And Allison, Danielle, Jenna worked tradition from food suite to send, sendable to board eight social media postings. And that's just an automated, you know, aggregate. For doing our treats and other socials. Danielle and Allison worked with Sterling to modify the suggest and purchase form on our library website. It now sends results to Allison, to narrow or reference depending on the paper input, whether they're asking about fiction or nonfiction, whatever the genre is. Veronica and children's create an excellent section on dyslexia within the children's section of the Needham Library website. Dyslexia has become a constant topic in the children's. It's a greeting to assist students in the library. The schools are, and the library and schools tested for dyslexia earlier, sending letters home to parents. Page contains info on dyslexia along with links to many resources for patrons. There's also lists of publishers for high load books, short for high interest, low readability. Engaging books for emerging readers and decoded books, books written carefully for origin readers to hone their learning techniques, complete with man catalog links.
There is a, also a dyslexia font in the Liby app too. I just learned that. So you can go in and like click and it, it's a different font that is easier for dyslexic people to read, which I just found that out. And we can share it with them. Our children's section and then they can maybe help out some books.
Absolutely. Let's see. Attendance said Paul's weekly fighting book rooms indicates story time taking these to grow. Thank you all. Reading proof acceptance funded through the LFN, electric meters diet on great demand. Whenever the time slot we expect opens, it's quickly filled up and generates a waveless. And it's been great hatred demand appreciation for this particular project. Okay, moving on personnel, my favorite topic. Two of our part-time circulation staff have recently been promoted, part-time positions in our reference department and children's department. They're really excited for Autumn Brown to start to do part-time reference librarian in reference on January twenty-fourth. That's a position that Jack and Bateman vacated when she moved up to the full-time digital media services spot. And we're also excited for Elliot from Monte to be starting in late January, the new part-time reference server in the children's department. And that position was vacated by Auntie a few months ago. Both Autumn and Elliot are pursuing their masters library services. They started out working part-time in their. Really happy about that.
Yeah.
Some of you may have heard that Manny DeCount, our full-time assistant cataloger and tech services, has retired this last Friday. She's given the library many loyal years of service. The last few months were quite challenging for her. She was down the department of one at different times. She held on the Port Ave Broadway, the personnel changes, and we got some staffing. We thank her for going above and beyond and for perseverance. And we'll be posting that position soon in the next few days.
We'll add our thanks to Manny also for
Yeah.
To the years of service.
It was just her for quite some time.
Yeah. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
With the, with the newer, with Autumn and Elliot being moved into children's, will that help? With the flow, because I know that people had mentioned on weekends that there might be one person.
So Autumn is going upstairs to reference.
Okay.
Elliot is moving to children's.
So they would have two just to
We're, we're filling the one position vacant.
Right.
Will help.
Right.
We're also utilizing a person from reference who has children experience on an occasional shift.
Right.
So it always helps.
Right.
But yeah, it'll help. Won't solve it, but it'll help.
The way to solve that would be to get one or maybe two full-time people down there? Is that?
But one of them is having the budget.
Okay.
So even if we have the right number of people, we don't necessarily have the right amount of money to pay more.
Okay.
And in children's in particular, we've had a lot of parents requesting programming during the weekend.
Right.
Which means that a staff member needs to supervise the program while another staff member is sitting at the desk.
Yeah.
On top of that, there's just been an increased number of people. So one person at the desk isn't always enough.
Okay.
We might need three reference librarians in children's during peak busy times on the weekend.
Is it, is it possible for any of the volunteers to help out?
They do not substitute equally for somebody with a master's.
They can't respond to the parents as women recommend for my third grader.
And if it's somebody over the age of fourteen.
We had enough people to support that.
If it's really true.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We have made an operative candidate to fill the part-time circulation staff position that was vacated by Hannah Bateman. Our recent promotion of Autumn and Elliot created two openings in circulation that will ultimately be reviewed for next week. And this week, tomorrow.
Might be a good time to promote the self-checkout. Well.
Sure. And I'll be talking about that. That usage has been exploited in self-checkout for sure. And then minimum app. And also tomorrow, we're starting the first round reviews candidates for tech services assistance, which had vacated by Tim Curry Regan a few months ago. And will be ended in postman's condition, as I said earlier. Okay. Yeah, who gets, tomorrow will be in some times in the form of a question, the yours and I was the first site that you snickered. Signed by the author. Jurors, and I know where to come back. Jurors from here, it's been signed by the office to be stolen. I'm gonna guess that's
Did that?
Hundred dollars in honor of Bernie Ford. And Paul Dunn, a hundred dollars in honor of Andy and Ben. And Fidel Lee Charter will donate a thousand dollars and for the Friends of the Needham Library, a hundred dollars in honor of Sam Stern.
Right? Is that Fidel into the recurring?
No, a lot of times what happens is if a workplace has a donation match, then it will filter through fidelity. We don't always see any of the connecting information. A lot of it's private, mostly because fidelity to clear the tax. Indication.
Thank you.
Okay. And let's see.
Yes, I think that's where we're at. Is there a motion to approve the gift list that Dimitri just described?
So moved.
Thank you, Megan. Second?
Second.
Michael, thank you. I'll say your name. Kay Cahill is not here. Anna Geraldo Kerr.
Aye.
Airheart Grace.
Aye.
Michael O'Neil.
Aye.
Robert Pettit.
Aye.
Megan Small.
Aye.
And I, Jay Fialka, also wrote aye, that unanimously approved. Dimitri, you want to continue with the building of grounds updated? We have good news, I know, on the urinal front.
Yes, we do. Two new water circles were installed in the men's bathroom on the first floor. Which for plumbing issues may not sound in here, but it means a lot. Angel was really happy about that. Signal alarm, the company's contract with installing new door hinges on emergency doors exit, so the alarms can work again on the first floor. That work starts on January sixteenth. And Angel and I joined Angel was saying, we want to recognize the week that we had that big storm. Jeter and Christina did a wonderful job loads of education. They went well above and beyond. Jeff was unfortunately sick and was out for a few days, but Jeter and Christina did terrific work. The week of December fifteenth. And also Jenna helped out a bit of it. For the data. So I know.
Up on the roof is pretty
From that to knowing the budget code.
I, I know.
My girl Friday.
So pretty soon.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Items are pending. Building management is still waiting to vote on masonry work around the building sidewalk and staff entrance. And Angel will be replacing building for the coming weeks. Financial reports. Operating budget, while salary budget lines are underspent, we do open positions, lines, materials, and other expenses are on target for this specific thing. And state aid on December seventh, the MBLC certified our library and announced the first award of two thousand twenty-four. The initial award is thirty-four thousand, eighteen eighty-two. And the following names remain, can be private, fully overdrive. State aid is on track. There's just, there's spending, spending.
Quick question, going back to the operating budget. It, it's correct to assume that we can't use any unspent money from the salary budget line to cover any other costs?
Salaries are on bottom line.
That is, okay, thank.
Salaries are hard money.
Can't touch it when somebody's working that job.
There you go.
So let's see, trust fund from the permanent donation fund, yeah. Or how do you pronounce the gentleman's name? Toddler. Two hundred and fifty dollars in Toddler, doing businesses that made the toolbox, the Lego bricks and town comm Lego update. Seven twenty-nine eighty for shelf dividing locators for children's and two sixty-six thirteen for books from Bedford Taylor. From the tone of fun, two thousand one hundred and thirty-eight four reverse to her investment for travel and hence the Young Adult Service Association's proposal, was in Yelson, sacred fury back November. From the hand. Seven hundred and seventy-four dollars sixty-eight seven for adult thinking. Then a hundred and fifty-four forty-five.
Oh, so it's a total of seven hundred and seventy-four to Baker and Taylor?
Okay.
And it was broken up into those three.
Okay. Well, landed, you know, three, five, thank you. P L L two twenty-six fifty-eight, all of the Baker Taylor. Four sixty-seven eleven, four hundred and seventy-seven for video games from Klein's Prinson. And seventy-seven dollars twenty-one cents for large imports from Centerland. From the Nutter Fund, thirty-one dollars forty-nine cents for books from Baker and Taylor and from the Y Fund. Thirty-three dollars twenty-five cents for reliable books from Baker and Taylor. One note that I have in there is the town transfer position is open. And there's been a delay in the interest number that libraries to allocate for calendar year twenty twenty-four spending. So it kind of has a knock on effect on a lot of things that we're trying to do. Much like, I swear. The direction permission will, same with treasures. So there's a little bit of a delay on a few things. But they're, they're working on it.
Any questions for Dimitri before he offers the statistical report?
Okay, sure. So you mentioned self-checkout?
Yeah.
You hear this anecdote, but the number to the south staff, see the minimum app. It seemed a notable increase from last year. Patrons seem to love it. They love to be able to check out their own homes, check out their own books, just sort of walk around and as one, one gentleman that I talked to often, I said, I feel like I'm stealing you, but I'm not. I go, no, you're not. As long as you use the phone, it's fine. You're not stealing. And they appreciate it for me being able to do that independently. And I say handheld devices, but I know a couple of other pictures bring their iPads and they do that. Which has been interesting when I see them trying to do that. And reflects the shift in also off the lines in library services. And in addition to self-checkout, arising self-checkout, the nervousful uptick in adult reference and children's reference questions. Surgeon children's reference questions that you've heard is talking about how busy they are. They are particularly negative of a strong interest, use of resources. And the Y programs experiences, so we've all remembered all we know about.
And downloadable magazines, right?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
They were a little chicken tracking that because they used to come through a different vendor that didn't provide us to test it. So it was a different
So might be caught up over several months.
More like it wasn't tracked for a chunk of time and now we're seeing the track.
That's kind of why I mentioned, because it's hard to date, you know, in terms of before and after, but it is impressive. Now, as far as Sorry, not to jump in.
No.
I, I, I was just going to say about you, I think Rob and Airheart have talked about the next item.
Yes, okay. So we are next on our agenda is the new business. And I'll ask Rob and Airheart, who I guess have given some thought, I don't guess, I, you know, some thought to how we're going to propose the strategic plan review.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll start by introducing and I'll hand it over to Rob to talk about the template, kind of the the master designer of, of those documents.
And they were part of the materials that Dimitri shared, if any of you want to be looking at them while, while they're talking, thank.
So the three of us met, Dimitri, Rob, and I, to, to talk about, how do we want to approach writing the annual report? You know, we looked back at the, the expectations in our, in our government stock, our bylaws, our government studies. And, and then looked at past examples of, of reports and thought with Dimitri, you know, how do we think about this, both in terms of what's easy for the staff to collect relevant information for evaluating each of the goals and, and related objectives? And then how does that turn into something that would be a straightforward evaluation that, that the trustees could write up about each of these goals? And so one thing we talked about was it'd be nice to have some templates by which to do that so that we could have templates both for recording that information as well as for then turning that into elements of the report. And the other thing we talked about was how do we give the, the responsibilities for, for actually doing the research on this and reporting out? And so I'll say that our, the proposal we came up with for, for the goals was that each trustee or, or most of the trustees, I should say, because we have six goals, seven trustees. Is that we each have a goal that we're responsible for, but we would work in pairs. Right? And so we each have a goal that we're responsible for, but that, that pair would work together in order to kind of develop the reports for each of those goals. So there'd be kind of a give, a, a back and forth and they kind of check each other's work and, and and have some, you know, support for one another as they go through and writing that stuff. And the templates would offer most of the content that they would need from the staff in order to do their kind of due diligence evaluation. So I'll hand it over to Rob to kind of talk about, you know, how we thought about that part.
Sure, sure. So, you know, there, there's kind of the two pieces here. As Airheart mentions, you know, the first is really how do we collect the information and that sort of spreadsheet we figured was the most efficient way to do that in a way that's organized. You know, in the past, you know, I, I'm thinking back to the last time that we did our annual review and there were ways that it worked and ways that it was probably not very efficient. This time around, we have a new strategic plan with goals, objectives, and action items. And I think the, really the focus of this review, the way that we set it up was to focus on the goals and objectives and only to focus on the action items that were identified as priority items for a specific year. The action items were meant to be sort of illustrative. When we were doing the strategic plan, it wasn't kind of a list of, we must do each of these things. It was kind of a list of, okay, here are some examples of how we might be able to accomplish this goal or this objective. So that's just by way of background. You know, the, the collection document, that's fairly straightforward. That's really just kind of a template to, for Dimitri to provide us with that information. And for staff to provide that information to Dimitri. In terms of the template for the actual goal review, again, we tried to keep it as straightforward as possible. In the past, information and responses were provided in sort of narrative form with actual prose rather than bullet points. We thought that a bullet point format would be easier to read because these can get quite long. Sometimes there are a lot of goals and objectives. Bullet points help to kind of separate the information when you're going through responses. And the, the structure here is really to, you know, first list out the goal and objective. List out the priority action items for the year. Provide any progress and status notes for those goals and objectives. And then kind of frame it in terms of next steps, rather than this goal has not been met, we're looking at, okay, well, if this goal is in progress or if a specific priority action item hasn't been implemented yet, we might address that in the next step section, which in turn gives us a bit of a blueprint for determining what our priority items are going to be for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, starting in July. So that kind of gets us on a cadence of reviewing these and our review of this will help us to identify what are our priorities for the coming year. So that was, that was the general thought behind this. Certainly happy to hear any thoughts on the format.
My, my, my first thought is, is to thank you both for giving us such a thoughtful, smart, and practical response to how we should think about this, it, it, which is what we expected from you when, when we knew that the two of you were, were on it. So thank you very much because it really it, it all makes perfect sense to me. I guess in the spirit of, of what you've prepared, I would say then, what are the next steps? In terms of putting this evaluation process into effect? And I welcome, of course, anyone else who might have comments about this, but I reviewed what you submitted, you know, we could share, you know, earlier and and thank you again very much for your effort. Anyone have any, any thoughts or maybe then, I don't know if Airheart and Rob had any further thoughts as to how we would go about out, you know, doing this or is this something we should probably start doing, if not, if not this month? If not at this meeting, our next meeting? And maybe we have time to think about it between now and next month, but we can figure out even if we can informally or otherwise, how we might want to allocate the responsibilities or come up with a process for allocating those responsibilities.
Anna has her hand raised.
Anna?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I'd really echo Jay's comments. And this looks much better than what I remember. So this is an evolution, I guess, in reporting and I think this will be much more efficient in telling the story and being more practical as far as guiding and prioritizing. So that's great. I think what I was thinking in terms of next steps is perhaps to have some kind of sample progress notes and sample next, next steps, or maybe we can use some of the objectives that are already being, it's been six months, right? So there has been a period of time, maybe some of the objectives can be already reported as progress. And so for us, for the trustees to have an idea of what is, what is the expectation, because I think we all can interpret this in many ways. So if there's a sample, particularly I'm thinking about including some data. So some numbers, some tangible data, because it could be, you know, I can see the first, for example, the facilitator, there was a staff day and it was great, great meeting. You know, we need to have some parameters. Where was this caused? When was it done? How many people attended? Something that gives us a more robust idea of the progress as opposed to be just generic information. That would be my, my my feedback. So maybe having some kind of a sample or some kind of just to see for the next meeting for us, okay, this looks like something that we can work with. And see if that, everybody agrees or not. But those are my thoughts.
And I, I could kind of, yeah, thank, thank you, Anna. You know, my thought is that it really depends on the goal or the action item. Some of these are going to be yes or no, like My thought is that it really depends on the goal or the action item, some of these are going to be yes or no, like staff day. Yes, we did that, provide a little context. You know, we probably can't assign a a a number to that, but then there there will be goals and objectives that, you know, maybe we can point to some data. Circulation statistics, visitor statistics, things of that nature to help back them up. As it relates to kind of doing a sample, you know, we could certainly, I I would be happy to take a crack at one or maybe Airheart and I, you know, try that. Ultimately, you know, in the past, I think one of the big shifts for this review, and I I think this is probably a good one, is that in the past. We, the trustees, were kind of the data and information collectors for this, which. Kind of created some some suboptimal processes in terms of. Um, you know, how the interactions went and and also it was it was just kind of, it wasn't centralized. I think the big change that we're going to see this time around is that. The the information, the status updates are really going to kind of be centralized with with Dimitri, um who will then kind of. Delegate and and work with staff members on responses to these individual items. Um, so to the extent that there is a goal or objective or really just a goal, I guess, one of the six goals, that we could. Sort of dummy up a, even if it's not final, right, because we're only halfway through the fiscal year. We could dummy up a response just to kind of show what the format might look like. That might be helpful, and I think one of the one of the key things is, you know, what kind of responses we have, because in the past. Some trustees might do a sentence or two for each response, and some might do a paragraph or two for each response. It might be good to kind of just set the tone of, okay, here's. Maybe what what might be a good level of information to provide for each one, just so we don't spend undue effort on. You know, writing up huge, huge write-ups for each item.
Rob, I I. Second, I I like the idea of 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 creating that sample and then what we're going to have to to figure out in fifteen second Michael is. Uh, given the transitional state that is at the library, what's the timing when you would imagine sharing this this template? With the staff in order to get the responses that would inform your review?
So so can I just hit you for a comment? So as as Rob alluded to, it would come whether it's myself or the next director or administration. This is kind of what this is going to be funded, it's not so much the staff. I mean, I'll I'll collect input from the staff and talk to them about the relevant things that they do, but it's not. We're we're not judging the staff, judging libraries institution in terms of.
Right, but you're asking for them to to fill out these.
No, I'll I'll.
You're filling out, so when, what's the timeframe in which you would imagine, you know, filling it?
As as soon as you folks approve this, I and and I talk about this with Rob and Airheart, you know, in the next couple of months, I can start working on this. It would be myself filling it out this one.
I I I thought this was giving you feedback from the staff.
I will, I will talk, I will certainly consult and talk to staff. But I I'll be the one responsible for it.
So, right, the 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 director's role here is kind of information collector. Um, whereas in the past, that role was decentralized, which led to differing levels of information and different approaches to collecting that information. Just for purposes, and and Airheart, let me know what you think about this, but just for purposes of creating. A sample, this wouldn't be the actual review of a goal or objective, but just to kind of set the tone for it. I could always go back to Dimitri's um very helpful. Action item update that we got mid-year and just kind of show if if we were using that as. You know, if we kind of treated that as the as the information that we were getting, I could kind of dummy up a. Something just to show like how the responses, what they might look like, even though it's not going to be what the final thing is. Would would that be helpful?
I I I think so, I think so. Uh, at Michael first and then Anna after Michael.
Well, what I was asked, uh, I I. I guess the the thing I was thinking of is that this exemplar that we're going to uh put together, is that something that we. Beforehand as a group decide which ones take priority? Or is it, or is it just um? Because if we're going to be in teams, are there certain priorities that we should be focusing on right away?
I think the partners have already identified some.
No, I think you're talking about like if we need to get moving on collecting certain data first around certain goals, or or maybe there are certain goals that we can start working on now.
Right.
That that others we have to wait on because of, you know, certain data that wouldn't be.
Right, and so I was saying if we're we're putting together an exemplar, which ones would be a a priority action item? In terms of us uh collecting data or disseminating data, is that something? Uh, uh, does that make sense to you?
That would that be something that you would. Be 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 generating?
I I think it's coming from you. If we start working, then I start working, I think. We know which objectives are priorities, you know, but certainly depending like Michael's kind of trying to say, I think, you know. There are some, for example, saying I'm home until we get a new draft, so you know.
Right.
Those wouldn't obviously be priorities right now, but the ones that we can can move on, we'll work on, like if I did on.
The other thing, the other thing we were talking about was actually um uh the presentation schedule. Uh, throughout the spring, right, the idea that we'd be working on these goals and probably be finishing those reports, you know, not all at once. Um, and we'd want to maybe, you know, stretch those out across a couple of meetings where, you know, like maybe, maybe. If I have one that I can report on early, I take the first presentation slot in, you know, February or March or something like that, and I can produce a draft of my. Section of the annual report can talk about the details in it, you know, and we can discuss them, et cetera. Um, and so we might think about a presentation schedule around a set of goals that we think might be ready at a particular time.
Because it was, it was like one of these things where we as a group. It's kind of different because we can't coalesce together to talk about this unless we're here. So that's, that is where having the exemplar or or kind of. Like, it it's a be a good idea and very helpful to us, so we're we're when we're. Getting these resources together, we're moving the inertia is going in a uh linear. Direction and um just making sure that we're on task. And I I I know you two guys and Dimitri, I think, you know, it it's great, but it's just like, how can we help this even more, you know?
Sure.
Yeah. Rob, before, before, let me, Anna's been waiting, let me just give her a ten.
Uh, thank you, you thank you. Um, so the other, one other thought I had about this document. Is uh the strategic use of it. So that that's why I'm really putting emphasis of what is that is going to be noted in the progress and the next steps. Because we could use this document as talking points with for advocacy for when we go to the to town meeting. So what information we want to, you know, I don't want to be super specific and create more work, but we have to be very strategic about so that we can just grab this piece of paper and just. When we need to, you know, advocate and and show progress, we have information that is going to be relevant to to influence votes, right? So so that's the other piece of it for 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 me to to really emphasize. Um, the quality of the data or the information that is in in the the progress and the next steps.
Yeah, thank you, Rob.
Yeah. And I I agree with that completely, I mean, thi- this really is for the the progress and status, this is going to be our opportunity to show all of the amazing progress that we have made over the past fiscal year. Um, despite all the transitions and 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 everything else, um, there's been some amazing work happening at the library and this document. Is a way to really highlight that and also be forward looking and say, okay, well, here's some action items that. You know, maybe we are are still in progress or we didn't turn to this year, but it's also a way to kind of frame our objectives for the coming years. Um, so I agree with that completely, you know, in terms of schedule, um, we're already in January and. Kind of the concept of this document is that we're reviewing the strategic plan for a full fiscal year. So hypothetically, you know, let's work backwards and say that we approve this at the July meeting. Because at the July meeting, fiscal year twenty twenty four will have just concluded. Um, working backwards from that, you know, Airheart was talking and and we were talking about maybe having two trustees for each goal. So there there would be, you know, sort of trustee teams, and I guess there'd be one team of three. And each of those teams would review two goals, so for example, if hypothetically, you know, Michael and I were. Working on goals one and two, there'd be another team working on goals three and four, and another team working on goals five and six, and that way. One single trustee is not going to be reviewing one goal by themselves, it it helps to provide, you know. Different um inputs on on each goal and and nobody kind of owns one one goal, which. That's how we did it in the past, but I think it's kind of nice to, and it kind of evens it out a little bit to to have multiple inputs on each goal. If we do that and we've got sort of three trustee teams. Um, we could have them present, for example, during April, May and June. And that would provide an opportunity for the trustees to review their their updates. And provide input on them and and share thoughts and, you know, if there's things that should be changed or added or whatever it is, that gives at least a month. For the teams to kind of update their their um. Their sort of uh documents. And then they would, those updated versions following those three meetings would be sent over to whomever is compiling everything, I I'd be happy to. Um, who would just put it into a single document and present it to the board in July. For review and approval, that that might be the kind of schedule. That we could be looking at, and that way, you know, the first set of goals wouldn't be. Due until the April meeting, which would give a solid three months to collect information and and do that drafting. I could still present a draft kind of uh goal review in the meantime, just to show what it might look like, but that wouldn't be what the final product is.
Style, uh, the style purposes.
That does put um some of the goals behind the town meeting though, right?
Yes, that right, because town meeting is what in May?
Yep, early May. First week of, um, let me see.
I mean, we could have everybody present in April, just do a super, super meeting. We could have a special meeting for this too, I mean, if, you know, because this would eat up an entire meeting.
Whenever, whenever the report is submitted, there may be some things that for for as a practical matter, you know, could have been addressed yet, and that's just part of the report.
I mean, for, I I know this could be a useful advocacy document, we we don't have to have it ready by the time of town meeting, though. I I I don't think, I mean, it it'd be useful to to have some talking points. But i- it's not something that we present to any other body, we just kind of put it out and and publish it.
And and also is not, is not only for town meeting at that time, and a town meeting is in in the spring and in the fall. But it's something that we can have, you know, in the toolbox. To whenever there's an opportunity to interact with town meeting members, select board members, FENCOM people, you know, that there is that, so it could be anytime.
Best, please, I just want to say thank you, Rob, and our heart, because it was great working with them, and I I love the product they came up with. Easy, I think, for me and staff to work with this, so thank you.
Great, yes. Thank you.
Definitely, it was a collaboration between the three of us, Dimitri had a lot of info as to what will work best.
Yeah. I I think. Oh, sorry, go ahead. I just could, one kind of final note, I think it's just about keeping all of this information digestible. That's why we went with bullet points, in the past, sometimes there would be whole paragraphs, which is great from a detail standpoint, but. Again, as a document that's going to be public facing to a degree, and just for our own reference, um, just keeping it easily digestible, I think, is is probably a worthwhile goal.
And I think it allows for you guys to to give a report that. As and when it occurs, you know, and I mean, you can put in something for now, waiting for a certain time to start drafting a report, and it can be sort of writing itself along the way. So that's great, so uh. Do we need to take action now in terms of identifying pairs for the for the goals, I suppose we should, we should, we should take advantage of the. Of today's opportunity to move it forward to that extent.
I think if we're if we're good with that proposal, I think that would make sense, um, you know, Rob and I didn't talk really about a a formal process, other than maybe folks could identify things that they felt that they were. Excited to work on or maybe had some relevant insight on. Um, you know, I was looking at goal six, I I worked on a good bit of the space uh planning stuff, so I probably want to be on a team that included goal six.
Well, I don't know how much work is actually going to get done between now and 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 next month, in the sense that maybe people would like to identify their preferred. Uh, goals and and we can uh allocate assignments, perhaps at. At next week, and in the meantime, Rob, Rob, you guys can come up with some sort of representative stylistic sample. Of of what a a response might be on one point, uh, and and we can take it from there. I, you know, I don't know if we'll we'll draw lots, I mean, we have, we have seven trustees and and only three teams of two, uh.
Have one team of three.
Oh, we can have a team of three, fair enough, or I was going to offer to be a ro- a rover. You know, but I'm I'm happy, however, however we want to do it. So so why don't we then all uh come up with thoughts as to what we would like to identify and. Work on as the goals and we can have a plan to to start taking action on that.
Great, and I'm happy to give you feedback, Rob, on 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 a draft.
That would be perfect, yeah, I'll take a first crack at it and then we can just kind of figure out, but again, it's really just to kind of establish the tone, so.
And I and I would also, by the way, be happy to give feedback on it, so, good, okay, great, uh.
Thank you.
Proposal, thank you again. Uh, proposal for the Needham Hart and Bloom, is there somebody who.
Uh, Dimitri? That would be me, right. I'm on the yard committee, so and uh, so I included this in your packets, just uh, won't read through the whole thing, but there's asking. Uh, best film garden lot is asking, um, requesting the dialogue. All appropriate, we need to cover unintended expenses this year or go for next year. And uh, budget, none of those funds raised, we have an operating budget only for our.
Is this something we've done, you know, every every year, wonderful, wasn't it?
I I think maybe the. That that would be part of it.
Well, I I only say that sounds wonderful to me and I'll support it, but uh if anyone has any comments, otherwise. Uh, we'll have, I'll I'll say your names and we'll we'll vote in support or not.
We should move.
Uh, that's right, uh, we'll finally consider that a motion.
And move, move to adopt the proposal for the Needham Martin Bloom twenty twenty four selling auction.
And second.
Second, second.
Thank you, Anna, uh, I'll go through the names.
We'll do third discussion, yeah.
Well, is there any discussion like that? Any discussion? Very good.
Keep us on our parliamentary toes.
I'm going to go through the names now, in support or not, uh, Kay, Kay Hill is not here, Anna Geraldo Kerr.
Aye.
Airheart Grace.
Aye.
Michael O'Neil.
Aye.
Robert Pettit.
Aye.
Agent Small.
Aye.
And I, J P Altham, also say aye, so wonderful to support. To support that. Old Business, is there any any update on this? Equity Inclusion Project Effort? Was that Anna something you were involved with?
I know there's something the director r- report, uh, some.
Okay, very good.
Projects. A- and the only thing is, uh, the Martin Luther King Day Celebration by Needham Diversity is happening Monday, ten thirty at Pollard. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
And I can go through what's in the book. Uh, program displays, there are holiday displays including multiple features, so authors of various backgrounds. Why book display up to the month of December, books about Indian culture by Indian authors and. And or with Indian representation, as a library we're partnering with Indian, you need to do that. In terms of resources that we've added. Um, twelve graphic novels, forty-two adult fiction and nonfiction books, children's, from fifty-two items. And um, staff progress, area dependent meeting of the Substance Prevention Alliance. staff progress, area intended meeting of the Substance Prevention Alliance Needham. Meetings are quarterly, discussions revolve around different events that are being planned or goals that are hoping to be achieved by certain time. The five-year plan, which just amended last year, this meeting revolves around looking differently accomplishing the different steps of some of these goals, and of course, the prison book program that Allison helped us set up.
I just wanted to say, Dimitri, I've seen the prison book program down in Quincy and how they do it. Oh, okay. It's very, very cool.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm glad we're doing it.
What is it that you saw?
Um, I, they do it in the, um, the church where, um, John and Adams and John Quincy Adams are buried, and so when you take the tour, they show you where they do the prison program. And I ended up on a tour with a friend who, we were the only two people who wanted the tour, so we got a really great private tour. So, yeah, it's very cool.
Go nose Alison for that, that's an idea suggestion. Uh, since we're talking about items, I just want to mention one item. I know I'm a little out of order here, sorry. But, um, in your packet, there's a sheet that, uh, Tamar and Tech Services gave you. Yeah, so it is, um, I think it's kind of cool, and it's nice for all of you to see, um, all of the different items added the last couple of months, and it's broken down on by John with the types of things. So, um, I know I quickly mentioned like generalities, but this kind of, this isn't, you know, um, EBI stuff, but it's just all material that is available at the library. So, I thought, if you like, I can continue to include it going forwards in the trusting packets, but I'm sorry, I'll give you this one this month and see what you think. Um, but I think it's nice to see where our progress is in terms of where where money goes from materials. So, that's all. I just wanted to bring your attention, you know.
Thank you.
I assume you'd like me to keep doing it?
Yes.
Keep adding to the packet?
Okay, alright. Old Business is not on the agenda, but I, I suppose we should acknowledge that the last month went well in terms of moving forward with hopefully getting this, the, the budget for the first step of the space plan uh, approved at town meeting. I think we're, you know, we ended up with that where we hoped we would end up, and so I think if, if we're mentioning uh, that accomplishment over the last month.
I went to the, uh, permanent public buildings meeting meeting last night, and, uh, there, there was a section where Hank talked about the capital boom projects, and of course, the one that we have coming up next, the moving area, uh, the wide area. So I just, I didn't, I didn't ever, I just attended the meeting, but, um, it, it seems to be on track, and I'm pretty happy about that.
Yeah, exciting. Uh, Library Arts and Exhibits Committee report, I guess Kay sometimes does that. I don't know that there's anything to report on that, but, uh, Rob, anything on the MacGyver's front?
I, I regret to say not at the moment, although I, I still am working on it and do have a couple of leads. Um, and one professor, a- as I've mentioned in the past, that Airheart worked with, who had a really interesting book about asteroid hunting, um, while she won't be able to do it for this spring, does have some availability in the early summer and fall. So, uh, although that may or may not be on my watch for that one, we do have something lined up.
Okay, thank you. Um, as far as the friends, uh, they have a, a, a couple of very interesting programs coming up, the, the program that was postponed from this past Sunday due to snow, Maureen O'Connor is a uh, we'll talk about successful brain aging. Uh, and I think it might be built, but that doesn't mean that if you want to go and you show up, sometimes there are no shows and people can, can get in. Uh, and Sunday, February fourth, uh, Imari Parrot Jeffries, who's the head of the Embrace Boston group that, uh, put that Martin Luther King statue, uh, up and together and, uh, uh, will be, will be coming and talking. That looks like it'll be a very exciting event. So those are two things on the horizon. I should mention, uh, that the friends have a book sale coming up, uh, the end of this month. Uh, January twenty-sixth, twenty-eighth. Uh, and the friends are always looking for new friends. If you know any people uh, who might want to, you know, get involved with, 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 with the wonderful group and do the good work that they do to, to help support the library, please, you know, mention it and see if, you know, uh, if you know anybody. Um, so that's that. What's next on the agenda? Library Foundation, not here, Beth is not here. Happy New Year to them all on the Library Foundation. Uh, any other comments from anybody about anything? Uh, uh, and I will make a, I will ask for a motion.
Oh, I do have something.
Too late, sorry.
Sorry, sorry. Um, the town, I forgot, I didn't get a chance to include it in the packet, I'm sorry, but the town put out a cultural, uh, um, what do they call it? Cultural dates calendar. Which includes, you know, Friday and other holidays. So our staff day is scheduled from our twenty-ninth to the cap to be modified. So the, the person from the math library system who's going to use as a facilitator brought that up to us, because that would be a mission for her. So
And probably for us, right?
So, I mean, the library is open. It would be open normally.
We might forget. There might be people who will choose to follow Good Friday commitments instead of coming to staff meeting, but we generally don't see a big issue. So we could be open that day.
But being, we could be open that day, but being sensitive to that, and we talked, already talked to Katie King about this. We're proposing to move our staff date to Friday, March twenty-second, or Friday, April fifth, we'd be preferring March twenty-second. So, um, I'm sorry, I didn't have that.
No, I, I'm going to vote it off. I would prefer a date that's not in conflict with, with Good Friday. Uh, do you want to ask for a date and I'll ask for a motion?
What, it's us for March twenty-second?
Okay, so, so you need a, a, the trustees to weigh in on the time of the date?
I think they've voted on, on.
Okay. Okay, so can I have a, a motion, uh, to, to change the date? Uh, this, that trading.
From March twenty-ninth to March twenty-second.
Yes, yeah, um, changing the staff date, moving to change the staff date from March twenty-second to March twenty-eight, twenty-nine?
Was that a motion?
I was trying to make sure I got the dates right. Was it March twenty-ninth?
To March twenty-second.
I was moving it back. Twenty-ninth to twenty-second, okay, so that's the bunch.
Okay, and maybe a second. I will go down the list. Kay, Kay Hill is not here. Anna Geraldo Kerr.
Aye.
Airheart Grace.
Aye.
Michael O'Neil.
Aye.
Robert Pettit.
Aye.
Aiden Small.
Aye.
And I, J. P. Alcov, also votes aye. Uh,
I didn't have a great time.
When will the retreat take place? Already?
It'll be here.
I, I got, everybody was like.
I'll ask then, does anyone have a, if no other comments, a motion to adjourn? Nobody wants to leave. Oh, Rob with a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Seconded by Michael. I will go down the list. Kay's not here, I'm sure she would be in support of the motion. Anna Geraldo Kerr.
Aye.
Airheart Grace.
Aye.
Michael O'Neil.
Aye.
Robert Pettit.
Aye.
Aiden Small.
Aye.
And I, J. P. Alcov, say aye. Meeting is adjourned. Happy New Year, everybody.